The following program is a production of Ho'ikeh Kauai Community Media.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones with Ho'ikeh Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello with the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Felicia Cowden, who's eager to share her ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you the chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters, and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of Kauai.
So let's dive in. Please join us in welcoming Felicia to the conversation.
Hey Felicia.
Hi, and thank you, Chamber of Commerce. You guys really contribute a lot in so many different ways. And I really appreciate this of both a candidate and a councilperson who wants our community to be engaged in the political process and go out and vote.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So why don't we dive into the questions?
Okay.
And the first question is, please introduce yourself to our audience and share a little bit about why you have chosen to take up the kuliana of leadership in our community.
Well, thank you. And this is my fourth term in office. So, you know, it develops and grows over time. I will say, first of all, I'm Felicia Cowden. And my early background, education, engineering, business. One of the things that did cause me to begin to run for office was my role on Kauai Community Radio as a private, excuse me, public affairs programmer. And, you know, kind of mediating in the community, the different changes and challenges. And to be honest, I have been going to council meetings since I was in my twenties. And definitely in my thirties, particularly as an owner of Hanalei Surf Company. I was very involved in policy and I was on the board for 13 years of the Kauai North Shore Business Council, if I remember correctly. About 13 years, at least nine years in there as either president or vice president. So, you know, the choices that are made by the council and the county are really important. And so all of that brought me to being involved. And as I continue to move forward, you know, I'll tell you, it takes longer and it's harder than I even realized before I ran the first time. And I didn't win the first time, by the way. And I wasn't going to run again. And after the flood of 2018, and I went out there to Hainaha and Wa'neha. I live on the North Shore. I've lived on the North Shore for 40 years. I remember stepping off the boat in Hanalei to get out. And as soon as I put my foot in the water somehow, I knew I was going to run and I knew I was going to win. And it really felt like a responsibility. I will say, it's not important to me to be important. It's just important to me to help. And the challenges that we face are decades in the making. And they aren't unique to Kauai. They're certainly not even unique to Hawaii. We have a very unique element to them. But the whole nation and really the world is facing a lot of the challenges that we are having. And so I feel a commitment to doing all that I can. And as I'm going into, this would be my seventh year, I've learned a lot. I feel like I have a lot more capacity to really be able to know how to pull the levers and push what's needed to create solutions and more relationships. But I'm still not going to pretend like it's a real easy slam dunk because it isn't.
All right. Thank you, Felicia.
Well, thank you. And as we continue forward, diving into one of the hot topics of conversation is housing affordability. Now, Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand of affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply, while rising housing costs and the prevalence of off-island investment exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance, and supporting community land trusts. Now, given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as county council?
Well, you guys are asking the most critical question, right? When we look at everything from businesses struggling, schools, even just being a consumer and needing to go to the gas station and have it be open, having a bank be open, having a restaurant be open. All of us are being impacted by the lack of housing, even if we're safe within our own house. It affects everything, all layers of business, all layers of productivity. And I want to be able to just start by saying, oh, I'm going to do this policy or pass this policy to build these houses. Like, for example, this week, what we have in front of us is a very well-intended bill. It's called Bill 2933, and that's for every house. It's called density, every house unit that's allowed on a piece of property that they could have another one. So that sounds really great, right? Yay. Except that we have been doing this for at least the six years that I've been involved. And so when you look at even a sixth of an acre, because of policies that have happened either in the state or in the county, we're allowed to have basically four units on there when we allow the additional dwelling unit and additional rental unit. And I've followed and looked at how many applications are made for those, and very few. It really hasn't made a difference. Now, why is that? So the big challenges are infrastructure, our water, and our sewer are two big pieces. It doesn't end there. But when I try and make it simple, and I taught middle school, so if I kind of make things too simple, and also on the radio, I find I like to speak at a level where anybody could understand. So I think there's several things that are really important to grasp. One is, it costs just about as much money to flush the toilet as it does to build the house. And even sometimes, like you're trying to build, I live in Kilauea. You want to say, okay, here's another lot. Well, we'll just put another house right there. And of course, there's, there's got to be some way to do it. Well, we don't have much extra water supply in Kilauea. And when we do things like add housing, so for example, like my house, I live on a third of an acre. I could potentially have three other units right on it. All of that raises the value of my property. I would have to put in whole new wastewater infrastructure. And we are, our community, we're hoping to be able to do sewage. But if, as other houses put more and more, they increase the density, that means put more living units and more people in a certain space of time. Well, guess what? There's not the water coming out. And something that we saw in Hanalei a couple of years ago, when we had two houses burned down, one even after the fire department was there and arrived, and it was the mother of one of the firemen fighting the fires. So you couldn't be more motivated. But there simply wasn't the water in the pipes. And then, so when I went to look at that, well, guess what? Those pipes have been in there for over 100 years. And two weeks ago, at our council meeting, we had the water department come in and they were talking about their what's called Water System Investment Plan. Really important. People can look that up on the Department of Water. We have $1.3 billion worth of improvements that we need to do to address where we're at right now. So I'm going to bring it back to housing, because you said, what can we do with housing? You know, having additional dwelling units, certainly we're doing these places like Le Maola. There are five properties on the islands where we're doing government subsidized housing. So that is not quite like free market housing. I'm not going to pretend that there isn't limitations on it, such as when you're effectively buying leasehold. It almost puts people in the same position as Hawaiian homelands. So it limits the lenders. Everything can sound great. We can say, well, let's do this. Let's not let them sell it for anything less. But then, you know, the people who can qualify for buying the house might be overqualified for being able to get USDA loans and things like that. So it's complicated. I could just go on for hours. Like that we're doing that, like that we're creating these different changes. I'm not going to pretend like it's easy to do. I'm going to let you ask me some more questions, because I could take that and run for the whole time.
All right. But such an important issue. So thank you for sharing your thoughts. So the next question is about economic diversification. We all know that we are very dependent on tourism for our economy here on island. But that leaves us vulnerable to economic downturns, as we saw during the pandemic. So there's a growing need, growing, there's a need and an ongoing need might be a better way to say that, to diversify the economy, to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy, and the arts, to name a few. What is your vision for economic diversification on Kauai? In which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future?
Well, I'm going to say, the list that you just gave are really quite on point, right? I think that those are very excellent ones. I'm hoping that high tech can really move forward quite a bit. We were all at the West Kauai Business Center where we talked about cybersecurity. I think any business anywhere needs cybersecurity people. And it's always nice to have a friendly face rather than a long-distance phone call or, you know, e-presence, you know, internet presence. And I think that I'm very thankful for that effort, and I hope that people watching even look into that, because there is training capacity. And we have so much of the leaders in the high-tech sector are part-time residents here that I think the Chamber of Commerce and certainly the county are very willing to try and reach to those residents. And I, what I've seen is a lot of them very much do want to make sure that we have a strong and viable economy here. So what I'm hoping is that we're able to develop from within more people who are able to be parts of those teams. We also see many people do remote work. I'll tell you one little thing I say, we can't have everybody riding in the cart. Somebody has to pull it, which means somebody's got to be doing all that physical labor. We can't have everybody doing remote work. But when I see people move over here and they're doing great economically with the remote work, I want more of our people to be doing great economically with the remote work. So those are one way. Agriculture, I think, is, especially with specialized products, is an area, I'm, as I've said many times, I'm all about neighborhood agriculture. I think we need to be resilient as we grow more locally. That's an excellent place. I mean, you gave me about five different choices. I could go down each one if you want me to, but even things like call centers, like I make all these phone calls. And I, you know, I'm talking to Southeast Asia an awful lot. And with all love and respect to that area of the world, I can tell that we aren't speaking exactly the same language. And I feel like in, we're the westernmost part of the United States. I would like to see us even develop that kind of strategy. And for many of the people who, you know, aren't of complete good health or want to be out and be physical, people can do that at their homes. And we can have all of that here. And then it keeps traffic off the roads, everything else. That's just like one small way, but there's a lot of things.
Yeah, absolutely. And so just so folks know, the program that Felicia mentioned was, is through the Kauai Economic Development Board. They're training local folks to become cybersecurity experts so that they can help businesses here on Kauai.
And you're even having a training next week, right? So people, you know, you guys are an excellent partner in that.
Thank you.
It's really great. Continuing forward with the conversation about climate change and environmental sustainability. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events, and threats to natural habitats. We know addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability is critical for our island's future. And Kauai has explored various strategies such as the coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction, and sustainable agriculture. So how would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai?
Well, I am very excited about that question. I would describe myself as passionate about it. And I am also committee chair for Public Safety and Human Services, vice chair for Public Works. So those things really fall under my umbrella. And I would say in the three terms that I have been in office already, I have really started to gain a good relationship with our large landowners. And we really need to treat them as valued partners. And the profound changes that have happened just in the 40 short years that I have been able to observe what happens here as sugar has moved out. We used to have all these inward and upward roads, all the cane hall roads. And of course, when cane was utilized, we had controlled burns and how we, our land management was much different. So what you can see from me continuing is I'm very passionate about how we have watershed management plans, how we have evacuation routes. We have places that maybe made sense then, and there were roads that came out, like when you look at Hanapepe Heights. That's a big, long place. I call those lollipops. I don't know exactly the number of people. I would just guess maybe 1,500 people. Have a cliff on one side and a burnable western boundary. Thank goodness, before the fire we had this summer, a fire break. Thank you to whoever cut the fire break. I think it was the Department of Transportation on Department of Hawaiian Homelands cut that fire break, could have saved that neighborhood. Thank goodness, everything went well. When we're looking at climate change and for people who are concerned about that word being over, or that phrase being overused, well, the climate is changing and the climate is always changing. So whether it is all from human-induced or where we are in the galaxy or the solar system, I'm not going to argue with that. There's changes happening. And so I pay a lot of attention to our Water Use and Development Plan. I'll be going to the Commission on Water Resource Management next Tuesday. Because these things are so important, and when we look at the studies that have come out of UH, we see that very likely in the next 30 to 50 years, we might lose 20% of our aquifer due to saltwater inundation, right? So we have to be very careful, in my view, of, again, working with the large landowners to hold on to those reservoirs, right? If we get less rain or less consistent rain, or our aquifer is reduced, we have to have that, that, you know, surface water. And the whole western half of the United States, for the most part, has water detention and water retention. And so there are many elements like that. And I think we really can't understate how important it is to be resilient for many different reasons. And Kauai and Hawaii was a master of it. I'm very proud of the heritage of the culture that I have been hanae'd into. And I have put a lot of time learning about traditional practices, Hawaiian traditional practices. And just a shout out to that community was able to basically amplify nature rather than exhaust nature. We've done it before. We can do it again. We could probably do it even more easily if we chose to really reinvest in what we talk about as a circular economy and our cultural peace. All that can kind of come into your last question too, and certainly the arts and all of that. So it all comes together and care very much about it.
Thank you, Felicia.
And live simply. Live simply so others can simply live. Yeah.
Nice. I like it. So next, we're moving on to transportation.
Okay.
You know, traffic congestion on Kauai continues to be a problem for our residents and visitors alike. But, you know, a lot of people sort of blame everything on the tourists. But as we saw, when school resumed in August, the impact of commuters on the island's transportation system is real. So in addition to infrastructure improvements, we have been exploring various efforts to reduce congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes, and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars present unique challenges. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you?
Okay. And again, all these kind of come back, they all come back to the same story. So like I said even before, if we had a little bit more remote work or a little bit more neighborhood agricultural work, and even like when I said call center, when we look at a town like Kilauea, where we're trying to put our 50 acres of buildable area, I tell you what, if we wanted to, I'm sure we could get all those houses basically employed right in our area and right near our ag park. We have so much need for people in our community. So I think the number one thing is live, play, and work where you are. And for so much of my time here, especially like when I had, Hanalei Surf Company was my business. I lived in Hanalei, flew out of Princeville, went to a movie in Kilauea. I'd put like 2,000 miles a year on my car. And I just really like to walk, even right here. Working in Le Huay, I, like I walked over here for now. Like when we do more walking, I think that that's very important. And as I talked about partnering with our big landowners, it's a much bigger ask to have permanent roads. But really, when we look at a lot of our permanent roads, they are paved over what were cane hall roads. A dream I have is instead of putting a fourth lane between Waileua River and Hanamaulu, I'd like to take that cane hall road that goes off to the right and make that be the fourth lane. So we don't have five or six years of construction. And that's another inward road. And so it can also be an emergency route, right? I think we need to have more of these emergency routes all over the island. I have ideas where we could do little feeder pieces. I recognize that it's cost, but we have to, and we're going to need to do that. I want to do one other little transportation piece.
Absolutely.
That when we have disruptive technology, like the cell phone is an example of disruptive technology. The internet is an example of disruptive technology. Another disruptive technology that we didn't seem to anticipate 10 years ago, when we started putting in all these bike paths, 15 years ago, is the e-bikes. Oh my goodness. We got to come up with something. I watch it all the time. They're like little swarms of locusts in my town. All these little boys, mostly little boys, not just boys, I'm not being sexist, boys or girls, kids, I'll use gender-neutral words. But they run around in the dark at night, both sides of the road, completely dangerous, right through the parks. They're like, and they're so fast, and you don't hear them until they get right there. And we've got our bike path that's beautiful. We've got all these elements. I'm looking at what they're doing on Oahu. They've got both a state piece of legislation and a county. We need to be consistent everywhere. But it's not that easy, because when you have a bike path, people might be on a walker with a stroller, all different kinds of things. And you have somebody coming at 30 miles an hour around a curve, that's not going to work out well. If you take that 30 miles around the curve and you put it on the roadway, well, they could get hit very easily by a truck. So we have always, there's new challenges. And I think though, those e-bikes actually could be ways, if we figure out how to handle that, to minimize some of the more localized traffic, because people, when they just got to go two miles down the street, you know, it's actually not as hard on all our roadway and our air and everything else.
Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you. Continuing forward with the conversation about agriculture and food sustainability. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy by providing local food, preserving open space, and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations, and the need for startup financing persists. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai and what actions would you prioritize?
Okay, well, I live in a happy hub, Kilauea, right? We, I'll own this. You can live on ambient conditions. I don't like to weed, water, or work. And I have a pretty high-demand job. And my yarden rocks it. I have so much more food than I could even possibly think about eating. I try and give it away. There's so much food in Kilauea, it's hard to even give it away. I put a picker on the outside of my yard, and I have things kind of growing, so it's spilling out. Like I think edible landscaping in public places, we need that. Because like, it actually is more than helps our economy, it helps the planet. When we don't have to ship, when we don't have to do things so far, it's remarkable how much it reduces the waste stream. And I think that there are unique crops like turmeric, organic turmeric. You're going to find a market for that. We have specialized crops. Those would be our export crops. I'm really excited about our biodiesel company in at Gay and Robinson. It's called Pacific Biodiesel. And that's a really great crop. I'm excited that that's happening. We have our shrimp. We have a lot of different things. Those are specialized crops. Those are going to be the export. I think for what creates healthy food in our grocery stores and our restaurants and stuff like that, I think there's an easy market for that here. If you do it low scale, it doesn't actually cost that much. Our food forest, I was the treasurer for that, $14,000 in just about five years is all we paid to create this really amazing food forest. I would say that, you know, some elements, when you get higher scale because of Food Safety Management, FSMA, food, I forget, I'm terrible with acronyms, Food Safety Management Act or something like that.
I should know that too. I'm trying to help.
I know. You know, anyway, these things, they defy nature. We have to be really careful for things like rat lung disease. We have to be really careful. But sometimes you're so careful, you're just completely fighting nature and you might as well be building, growing crops inside of a building. And they suggest that, but I don't, you know. Nature isn't the enemy. We have to learn to work with it instead of against it. But I think our main ways for growing food economically is small scale. And if we can have a guesthouse on those farms, usually in the area where I live, people put the person in the guesthouse, the person who really does the farming. And the person who owns the farm has to have a straight job to pay for it, because let's face it, you're not going to support a couple million dollar piece of property with lettuce.
No.
And that, a couple million dollars is nothing anymore. $3 million is just a house on, you know, some acres, you know.
Okay, so moving on to the next question, destination management. How familiar are you with the Destination Management Action Plan?
Well, I feel like I'm pretty familiar with it. I was very excited about watching its development during our COVID window. I think that we're still seeing, here's another Native Hawaiian Advancement, Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, right? They are the ones who took over for the Kauai Visitors Bureau for part of it, right?
Part of it, yeah.
Yep, so we have both. And I actually am really excited to see a Hawaiian organization do a good job of that, because that's what we really, that's how we need to brand ourselves. And it's not just a gimmick. It needs to be reality, right? It's not a gimmick, it's reality. So I think that's great. I mean, I've been involved with Waipaa and the Food Park and, you know, NTBG. I have trouble with all these little letter things, the acronyms. National Tropical Botanical Garden. We have a lot of elements like that that can be really good in those types of things. I want to give a shout out to Tsukanoho, who is Kauai Visitors Bureau, because I feel like she's always done a very good job. And I love, you know, And I love, you know, our Moki Hana Festival and all our Hawaiian-based elements.
So let me ask you this question. What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai?
Well, I would say my top priorities for tourism on Kauai is having them received in a really welcoming and happy way. I, I know that like having worked in, I had, Honolulu Surf Company was my business, so I was front-facing. And I love both sides of my customer base. And how I felt like I did a really good job greeting the visitors was making sure that more than half of my business was my own little grommets, my own community and having an authentic store. But having dealt with people who are part of interval ownership or time share, whatever we call it, I was able to really learn to love that community because whatever anybody else might think of them, they identify with this island. After the hurricane, they were some of the very first people to show up and be, you know, cleaning up after things like the Fourth of July. They're the ones who helped, they're the ones who helped clean the beach. I remember when we have been shut down, there are people who are sending stuff from long distance and they're not even able to come here. So I like to farm our visitors. I like to have people come regularly so they're a part of it. And without these people who come year in and year out, things like the Boys and Girls Clubs, our medical facilities, so many of our nonprofits, our churches, I think what we saw in COVID when we, they were gone, so many of these nonprofits and things that you don't even think about as being part of the visitors, those things, we had churches go out of business. And I don't want to call it business, but they, they couldn't keep the doors open.
Understood.
And so I want to keep our balance where we are loving up on them and we recognize their value and we include them in ways where they know they're welcome. And I think our Destination Management Action Plan is helping to educate and cultivate future generations. And I will say that there are multiple generations that I've watched from the same families that are part of our communities. And so people might consider them tourists, but I consider them a part-time residents. And I, and I support them.
Yeah, so last question.
Yeah, last question, just shift your leg down a little bit.
Okay.
Just a little, just a little.
Okay. And I have one thing I want to say, but give me your last question. And I might convert it into that.
No, it's good. The last question, is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers?
Yes. Okay. Passionate about this one too. And a lot of times I know people get tired of me talking about our unhoused population. But I'm going to speak about our unhoused population. And it heart, it's heartbreaking for me to watch that community cascade further and further down. I am thankful to our county for how we have done Ka'alaula. We've worked really hard to build structured houses. But you'll hear me championing them even as we're talking about real property tax because they're the downstream problem of our real property tax. And so as people get displaced, I really am going to, and I hope somebody who can help me in government will be hearing that how important I think it is that we have three to four acres as a safety zone. And we can have real strong guidelines. I'm sure we can create criteria where it is people that work here or have some sort of history in the island where they're there. So we're not opening our doors to everywhere. But we do even have plenty of people who work that are without housing. And when we do these sweeps, like last month, my estimate is probably somewhere between 300 and 500 people were swept. So unsurprisingly, probably some of the fires that occurred have to do with that sweep, whether it's accidents or anger or the "not in my backyard" amongst the displaced people because they don't all get along and they don't all want to live near each other.
Can I interrupt for a second? What sweep are you talking about? Because I'm assuming you're talking about the one that happened there, the county building?
There's the one that we call the old mill site. There's also Akukini and then also down near the lighthouse in Leihue. And then, so how it impacts all of us. Everybody noticed that there's like rubbish along the sides of the road lately, like crazy? I've been like chasing that down. What's up with that? Well, there's a lot of things. But among them is like when these things get swept, people got to go rebuild their houses. Where are they going to go? They're going to go to the Leihue Transfer Station where we have the bulk rubbish, right? They're going to get their new couch, their new mattress, their new, you know, pallets. People have to, so then, so damage happens to those things that seal, seal that in. And so we have, we have that kind of challenge going on. We have problems in the parks. We have problems with the police. We have problems in the hotels. We certainly, I was a businessperson. You don't want that right in, on, right on your street, right? Sleeping in the court, your Alcoa at night. There's multiple areas where we spend a whole lot more than we would to put up like a few big, serious tents, have bathrooms, showers, and guidelines, and where we can separate people out. Families need to be in different places than people who maybe are still working on good constructive habits. I mean, you know, like, but I, I think that's something that it's so unfair to not look at. And I have been paying attention to how many people basically die of despair. And that's not a very happy ending. Let's all be happy, but I want them to be happy. I'm going to be happy when we're all happy. If people aren't noticing others that are suffering, yay. And it still impacts you whether you're aware of it or not.
There you go. And well, thank you for your time today, Felicia. Yeah, it's been a very informative and helpful conversation. And so mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support that made this series possible.
First, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued partnership.
And a special thanks goes out to Huike, Kauai Community Television, for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
We're also grateful for our Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
We couldn't have done this without Kikaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thank you to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
Remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and help shape the future of Kauai.
Thank you for watching. Ahouihoe.